Good morning, I'd like to call the order this meeting of the Wabash County Board of Commissioners for Monday, December first. First item on the agenda is review of the minutes from November seventeenth. Any additions or corrections?
I'll make the motion, it leaves any minutes presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we accept the minutes as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passed. Under new business, you got resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, day eighty-five, day eleven, resolution opting into the housing optimizer's reconstruction grant program.
Good morning.
Morning.
Happy Thanksgiving, you've been late. Before you, you have a resolution to simply opt into the option to participate on a county level for the housing optimizer pre-construction grant. So, all you need to do as a county is agree that you want to participate, and this is coming from the Strategic Development Commission from northeast Indiana. The resolution needs to be approved by the end of this year, and then there's a whole application process that'll start early next year. In the details, it says March thirty-first, but they told me that's already delayed, so by the April of the fourth, we can do applications. But this can go for any housing project you want in the county at your discretion. And the county is eligible for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
They're asking for you to speak up, maybe help Sarah's mic.
Yep. So the county is able to get a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars based on this, and use at your discretion, so. Part of the requirements for being a part of the program is you have to do a training. So I signed myself up for training, and Connor Heimann with the Wabash County Development Corporation has also signed up for that training.
Been through overseas.
That'll be up to your discretion, I'd probably recommend either Gromash County or the Wabash County Development Corporation, based on what project is selected.
Do we have to submit a project to get the money, or do they send the money with a project in mind? How does that work?
You will decide on what project you want to fund as a county, and it can be anywhere, so it can be in the town of North Manchester, the city of Wabash, anywhere. Then they approve it, and then I would suggest you do a pass-through to either Wabash County Development Corporation, that'll track the the money, and then it'll be a reimbursement.
Other questions?
This doesn't commit you to anything, this is just saying you want to participate, and there'll be an application process.
If not, I'd entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution, page forty-five dash eighty-five dash eleven.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passed. Next, um, you did, you have a contract with rural Wabash County.
I've stayed up here since I was second to. Before you, you have the new twenty-twenty-six contract. I'll highlight a couple changes, just so you're aware of those. We've reduced the amount to the eighty-five thousand, which was down from the ninety-five thousand budgeted this year. And then there are a couple changes to exhibit A on responsibilities, which include just some that we call good to hapties, there were some functional staff, instead it made more sense to be an administrative support for the redevelopment authorities and commissions. Under tax abatement evaluations, we changed those to recommend instead of create, since those are all approved by the council. And let's see, for strategic planning, we broadened it to include a couple other areas of our focus, which include business development, workforce development, and livability. So you can see those highlighted in exhibit A. So for workforce development, we added collaborate with schools, higher education, and adult education providers. For entrepreneurship and small business support, we added resource navigation in our revolving loan fund and coaching. And then under livability, we added that, since that wasn't previously on there, so that would be some like the stellar projects and some of those other items, as we try and bring more money into the county from outside resources. And then since we do act on the county's behalf of regional coordination, we did add regional and state coordination in there as well, working within northeast Indiana Regional Partnership, Okra and the Ready Team, the Strategic Development Commission, and other state initiatives, so we did add that in there, since we're already doing it, it's just one of us then. So with that, I would entertain questions. And then also in the packet I sent you, I gave you some stats and numbers there as well, so you can just kind of see the number of jobs that are coming in, the amount of investment that has transpired, and that's just based on the last three years. So you can see, the data doesn't lie, we're doing really well as a county in terms of per capital, per capita personal income is up forty-three percent, which is incredible, we're one of the top counties in the region for personal income levels that are increasing. You can see our average wages have gone up forty-six percent since twenty-seventeen. We are currently working sixty-one active business projects right now, with several announcements coming in quarter one of next year, so really excited for everything that's going on. There are some other key points there for workforce data numbers, and then some other numbers from grants that have been brought in over the last couple of years as well, so.
I've been asked if we take this under advisement, to let the council have a look at it.
Okay.
They meet next Monday, and then we can have it back on our agenda on fif- fifteen.
Okay, fifteenth.
Depending on review from Mark as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark has already reviewed.
I've seen it. You are.
Mark reviewed that in resolution.
He's on.
That's good for him.
Yeah, Mark reviewed it first, and had several edits that...
Mr. Duffring here.
Yes, where did you get the ninety-five thousand, because I'm ninety-nine percent sure we've budgeted eighty-five thousand.
I have that number in the amount budgeted under Gromash County on Gateway from last year. Now, the contract's only for eighty-five thousand, but the budget amount was eighty-five thousand, so.
So where's the extra ten thousand come from?
I think it was mistakenly budgeted, because it originally was a hundred thousand dollars that it was supposed to be this year. So, yeah, so we just reduced that down to the eighty-five thousand, based on your suggestion, and then just knowing that SB one is coming in, there's potential changes, so.
Well, we had asked the commissioners to terminate this contract, because the auto renewal makes it still in here, and I guess this isn't really the proper form to debate this at this time. But I'll give my changes tomorrow.
Okay.
I think the contract bill that you're talking about already had that clause in there, that if we decided we wanted to change the amount, we were able to. If we didn't, then it would auto renew.
Yeah, if there were...
So that contract had in there that we could change it if we wanted to, but we had a date, we had to hit five. If we didn't, then it would...
Ninety days, no...
Then it would pick up as that ninety-five or eighty-five, or a hundred, whatever that number was.
Yeah. Ninety days by the end of the year, or...
So really, I don't think we ever needed to terminate the contract, we've already, and then we can negotiate it.
Yeah.
So.
Another lawyer, that's when we we looked at and said, okay, they need to terminate this, so we can make cuts to the funding. All the other nonprofits, everybody else took a hit, we have no idea what they're gonna do by March fifteenth in Indianapolis, so I'd recommend a twelve percent cut off of the eighty-five thousand, and the reason is that everybody else took cuts. The two million dollars personal property taxes, you know, that's taken away a big part of the duties that they have to do. So, that's...
I think they already took the cut, they wanted a hundred, and then the eighty-five, that's a fifteen percent cut. Yeah, that number's already...
But they got eighty-two thousand last year.
Yeah.
So, so it's still in groups, so. But, and...
What's the chair's phone?
Other, other questions?
Oh. All the other nonprofits and stuff, can we put in the contract? The commissioners put in the contracts, and you sign it, they have to come to our budget hearings and open their books. All the other nonprofits have to sign the thing, it was passed last July one, and I know there's a difference between a nonprofit and somebody that's contracted for services, but I feel like if they need to come and make a report in budget time in August, what they've done, you know...
I think you were here during...
Yeah, I was here for all budget meetings, also, we self-elect to do an audit every year, that commissioner is a part of it. So every year, we do not have to be audited, but we do it for transparency, and we publish those publicly on guidestar.com, so you're welcome to see those at any time. But happy, I do plan on attending my budget hearings.
Other questions?
Hi, dear, look, here, Metzger. On the page for Row, I've noticed that we promote data centers and do not have any kind of variance or anything to address or protect our community with, you know, water, well, residents for rising utility costs. Why do we promote that without any protection set in place?
I am not aware of where a data center is promoted at all, I can assure you, we are not going after data center, we do not have the power capacity. You don't have what power capacity, we would never go after a data center. And I'm not sure where that is on the website, because our target industries are advanced ag, advanced manufacturing. Data centers are not one of our target industries. We've done strategic studies...
So is it something that northeast Indiana Economic Development?
You're probably...
Makes you promote?
Yes. No, no. Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership may believe you not.
Okay, so the data center grows retail and use tax, as mentioned, that is on gross pages.
Oh, for a tax. Yeah, that's just a state tax. We're not promoting to get that tax. Sorry for that confusion, no, we are not going after data centers, we're not going after any mega projects. So, if you go to Target Industries on our website?
Yes, I did. I just, I didn't understand why this would even be listed. That was the confusion.
Oh, for sales tax exemption? Yes, no, I'll double check, but we are not going after that. And in fact, yeah, we did a strategic study three years ago with what Wabash County could handle, and typically, we like smaller manufacturer, smaller... I mean, we can sustain sixty jobs at a time, a hundred jobs at a time, but we couldn't do data centers. We don't have the power capacity for that either. So. And we did a site, site study with the state requirement last year, and so our power providers can't provide power for a lot of the projects we have right now, so. That's something we're working on, just trying to get power to the four-meter box project and some of the other expansion projects too, so.
There's a, there's eleven counties in that northeast desert.
And I can assure you, some of them are going after data centers, right? Fort Wayne's got two announcements already, so.
Region three A just took possession of the department building, and they got a few year waiting for senior citizens. And we got all these people in this county that aren't quite ready for the rest home, but can't maintain that four and five bedroom home anymore, are you guys looking? I mean, I saw, I saw it on your list, but it looks like it's at the bottom of the list.
Yeah, that before the Wabash County Development Corporation, that just started last year, and I do say it on the board of that as well, essentially leaving it nine o'clock. Their focus is charitable housing, so it has to be affordable in Wabash. So everything they're doing currently is infill housing. They're also doing the new townhouses across from Manchester University, and all of those are coming under two seventy-five, which is what the data says is affordable here. Now, you're talking true affordable based on income sliding scale, and we've actually been working with the developers that have done some other affordable housing here, to see if we can get another project going. So. I know there was one project that we weren't assisting with, that was proposed recently, that didn't go forward, based on some neighbor opposition, so hopefully we can keep going. But it's definitely needed.
I would suggest we take this under advisement, and then it'd be back on the agenda on the fifteenth.
Yep.
We, we need a motion stating that.
I'll make a motion that we table it till fifteenth, being so the council can look at it.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, that we tabled the contract with rural Wabash County, and then it'll be back on the agenda on the fifteenth.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kenial. Next, we have an appointment of Justin Adams to Wabash County Jurisdiction Commission for a two-year term.
Motion to accept an appointment of Justin Adams to Wabash County, or his inflation.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion passed. Dave, I'm, I'm gonna interrupt you, if you need to have conversations.
Sorry.
Take out, in the hall, please. The next item is the animal shelter, and before you come up, our plan is to go to the council meeting on the eighth with a request for twenty-five thousand dollars for twenty-five, and sixty thousand for twenty-six, divided into four quarterly payments. We can't do anything unless the council appropriates that money, so.
But that'll be our request.
That'll be our request to the council.
I was told to bring the, like a bill? I mean, for both of them, an invoice, so that you would have that? I don't know.
Do you need that, Shelley, for...
You can give them to me, but we need a contract. Mark's been working on the contract to get signed, to be able to...
And you could come forward if you want to present further information, I, I just wanted to preface that with, that's what our request is going to be to the council.
Right, that's what we agreed to when you attended our meeting, our board meeting a couple weeks ago, so. It's agreeable to us right now, I mean, we're wanting more, and I understand that everybody's stressed tight, and, and everybody took a hit, but you know, city gives a seven hundred thousand, so. And it's a simpler area. But I had heard also from my brother, who's the building inspector or something in Manchester, he talked to the town manager, and he said he was interested in talking to us, so.
Yeah, because I believe they go to Warsaw, Costco, so, yes, I would like it to be back to Wabash County as well, so.
We would too, we get a lot of calls from that area, so.
Yeah, thanks, Diane.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Dave, you have another question, for Shelley.
Well, I understand in twenty-five, there's no money in there, right? That's additional appropriation. For the twenty, we put twenty-five in for next year, for twenty-six, so you're asking, they're gonna be asking for another ninety thousand?
No, they're asking for twenty-five this year, which we've put in additional appropriations on the agenda for the eighth, so you guys will decide at that point. They're requesting sixty thousand for twenty-twenty-six. There's only twenty-five in the budget, so we can't sign a contract until like, right now, our budget is at the state to be approved, so we can't change it. We can't change it until the annual financial report would be done, so we can't do an additional appropriation until February or March, to be able to fund any more than the twenty-five that we suggest.
Other questions? Okay, that, that will be our request to the council then on the... Next, we have ordinance twenty-twenty-five, day eighty-five, day twenty. An ordinance establishing requirements and operational requirements for horse-drawn vehicles and trailers. Like, you've, Mark's reviewed.
I drafted that for you, for your review.
Yeah.
So.
Questions? Questions from the public? Yes, Sharon.
Is there a copy, Cheryl, which one? Is there a copy of that ordinance somewhere where the elephants live as well, it's a...
Yes.
I can post, I can post it on the...
It'll be posted on there after...
After you approve it though? I mean, so we don't care what it says? No.
And we're just gonna do first reading today, so then second reading will be on the fifteenth.
Okay, I want to thank you. I saw one who lives in the area, thank you.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eighty-five dash twenty.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, then we approve ordinance twenty-twenty-five day eighty-five dash twenty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passed, that's first reading, do I have a second reading on the fifteenth?
And where will you post that?
I'll post it under the review items, so that anybody that wants to see it can.
Any other questions? Before we move on? Department reports, county highway.
I have nothing to report, other than I need a signature on Vernescove, two hundred west, Division, they've got a twelve-inch gas main, so we'll have a road closure there, which will work within one, but I just need a signature for approval on that. I don't have anything else.
Yeah.
That's right.
I'm gonna have a motion stating...
I'll make the motion for the road closure on two hundred west for the gas main and Division road.
Second. Been moved and seconded, and we approve Vernescove County for closing the room, whatever thing you need to install with gas line. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion passed. Next, we have county sheriff.
I always thought it was only me.
Just have the monthly jail report for November. Our average total prisoner count was a hundred and forty-five inmates. That was thirty-two females, one hundred and thirteen males. Number of prisoners booked into jail during that time, eighty-five. Average number of bookings for the year per month, seventy-three. Level six sentenced females, five, level six sentenced males, sixteen. Prisoner transports, nineteen. We did transport three males to the Indiana Barren Corrections and two females. We collected DNA from thirty arrested felons. And those would be numbers. I mean, for the questions, I...
Number a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Surprising now, very odd.
Very odd.
Because they were down in summer, and now they're up.
Yeah, it's just you live the other way.
Yeah.
Thanks, David.
Question, prompt, I have you. Next, we have county attorney.
I have nothing.
County auditor.
I would like to once say I have nothing, but...
You don't get that fortune, so.
I may have some employees that would be...
Sad.
Yeah.
Okay, I have the Johnson Confosed Service Agreement, and this is to have... We changed phone services, so now we need digital phone service to the elevator in case someone gets stuck.
Yeah.
So.
Re-review on...
I make a motion to accept the service agreement with Johnson Controls.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, and we approve the service agreement. Johnson Patrols in the amount of two thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. We have a motion on that. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passed.
I have the accounts payable claims and allowances for dockets ending eleven-twenty-four and twelve-one, for your review and approval.
Make a motion to accept the accounts payable claims and allowances, and docketing eleven-twenty-four and twelve-one.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, and we approve accounts payable and allowances for docket ending eleven-twenty-four and twelve-one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passed.
I have your payroll claims allowances, including the withholdings for pay period ending eleven-twenty-two, for your review and signature.
I'll make a motion for payrolls, claims and allowances, withholdings for pay period eleven-twenty-two, twenty, twenty-five.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, and we approve the payroll claims and allowances, including withholding for the pay period ending eleven-twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passed.
We have a rental agreement to sign to rent eight oh eight for twelve-twenty of twenty-twenty-five, for your approval.
You need, you need a motion, you know, make a motion to accept the rental for twelve-twenty of twenty-twenty-five.
Second. Been moved and seconded, and we accept the rental agreement for the eight oh eight, Manchester Avenue. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passed. We have no role business, are there any ADA or Title Six concerns that need to be addressed this morning? Let the record reflect that there weren't any. And the review items? We don't have any. We have bid opening at nine-thirty for the county highway.
They have until nine-thirty to turn them in in my office, can we give them one minute to bring it up? You guys...
You want us to move down?
You want to move down like you do, or bring them up? You want you want to move down like you do or bring him up?
We'll move down there.
Ryan, for future, when we do this, did you make them do before the meeting? So I can bring him up the best way. In case it was a quick meeting.
We'll need a motion to close the bids in.
I'll make a motion to close the bids for the county highway annual bids for supplies.
I'll second that.
Been moved in seconded that we close the bids for the county highway supplies and maintenance equipment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same, motion passed.
First bid is from IMI, I believe, yeah. We need to go through all of the on the list?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I think mainly the amount.
Yeah.
Should be on probably towards the bad.
For IMI, it'd be for material size for stone. Number two, fifty-three and seventy-three commercial stone will be twelve-ten per ton. Number four, commercial stone will be fifteen forty-four, forty-five per ton. Number eight, commercial stone, fifteen forty-five per ton. Number nine, commercial stone, fifteen ninety-five per ton. Number twelve, commercial stone, sixteen ninety per ton. Chips, eight per ton, and the reviment riprap, twenty-nine point six-five per ton. All prices, yep. And then yeah, this is just the rest of the lab, so it's uh that's one for IMI. It's just a copy. Yeah. Yes, it's a copy. Next one is Gauntson Asphalt. Um, first item for them is the asphalt, or no, concrete. Ninety-five dollars per ton. Anthony, should I say asphalt base, blinder, surface? Okay, so for the base is ninety-five a ton, binder ninety-five a ton, and surface is a hundred dollars a ton. Tac coat, four dollars and twenty-five cents per gallon. Transportation is a hundred and forty per hour. Above load of the county trucks. At this, oh, so if they come pick it up, is that delivered price on those?
Yes.
And then if we pick up the asphalt at the plant seventy-two fifty for base per ton, seventy-two fifty for binder per ton, and then seventy-four, seventy-five per ton for surface. That's just the copy, isn't it? Yeah. Next, we have Gaunt again. This is for um using the equipment. Or using you guys for the equipment. Yeah, equipment rental, power broom seventy-five per hour, favor a hundred per hour. Roller a hundred per hour, loader a hundred and fifty per hour, and operator for a hundred per hour, any equipment. Next one is Pearson Trucking. Uh, liquid material. Uh, AE ninety-two sixty-four, AE ninety S two eighty-three, AE one fifty-three eleven, AEP four forty-six, AE dash NT two sixty-five, AE two hundred three oh eight, chip two twenty-seven, ceiling asphalt three twenty-three, MC two fifty-three eighty-eight, MC thirty-three ninety-seven. Next one is Great Lakes Chloride. Uh, for salt brine, sixty-two cents a gallon. It was the easiest one. From Pearson, is there representative Pearson Truck?
Asphalt emulsions for the AEs.
Yeah.
Thanks, Cole.
Yeah, thanks, Cole. Another one from Great Lakes Chloride, or calcium chloride would boost a dollar thirty-nine a gallon. Next one's from Kokomo Gravel. Uh, they have washed sand for ten fifty per ton. Gravel thirteen ninety-five per ton, number seventy-three, crushed gravel fourteen twenty-five per ton. Number nine, commercial crushed gravel fifteen fifty per ton, and number eleven, commercial crushed gravel, sixteen dollars per ton. Next one's from Speedway Sand and Gravel. Uh, pill gravel eight fifty per ton, number fifty-three, commercial gravel twelve fifty per ton, seventy-three, commercial gravel twelve fifty per ton, five gravel seventeen dollars per ton, number eight gravel fifteen dollars per ton, eight cap gravel fifteen dollars a ton, and eleven cap gravel fourteen fifty a ton. Speedway Sand and Gravel again. Uh, this is for their uh sand, twenty-three cap sand thirteen twenty-five, and twenty-four cap sand thirteen twenty-five per ton. Next one is asphalt materials ink. Uh, this is also for the liquid asphalt inclusion, uh AE ninety-two sixty-two gallon, AE ninety S three oh two a gallon, AEP two sixty-two a gallon, and then dust lay two thirty-two gallons. Seaford paving. Yes, this is their whole mixed patching material, um, hundred and sixteen per ton. Picked up at their Logan's Fort plant, delivered to Wobash County Highway one twenty-eight twenty-five per ton. Yeah, President Brown. Further, cold patch, hundred and forty-five per ton. Again, Finn and Brown. Further base, hot mix base eighty-one per ton, binder eighty-one per ton, surface eighty-eighth per ton, tac clo- tac coat applied four twenty-five per gallon, and the transportation bid a hundred and sixty-five per hour. That's if they do the work. If you pick it up in Leesburg, the base would be fifty-four a ton. Then the binder would be fifty-four ton, and the surface would be sixty a ton. And the last one for Finn and Brown. Uh, number eleven, or it's number twelve gravel mixed cold patch, ninety-two dollars per ton. Yeah, those, yeah, that's about it there, yeah. Next one's from La Fountain Gravel. Like fifty-three gravel at ten dollars per ton. Number eleven gravel at fifteen dollars a ton. Fountain gravel, number twenty-three sand, fourteen fifty a ton. Then the last one from West Plains. Further stone prices, number two, commercial eleven fifty a ton, number four, commercial fourteen twenty-five a ton, eight commercial seventeen fifty, nine commercial seventeen fifty per ton, number eleven, commercial eighteen dollars a ton, number twelve, commercial eighteen fifty a ton, number fifty-three, commercial eleven dollars a ton, seventy-three, commercial thirteen dollars a ton, and the manufactured sand is nine dollars a ton.
That's it.
That's all. Make a motion to close the bids and have Mark review them. Take their advisement.
I'll second that.
Been moved in seconded that we take these quotes and bids under advisement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same, motion passed. Thank you to all the bidders this morning.
That was it.
Any, you have any questions or comments from the public this morning?
I'm going to, I was waiting for the, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Been moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your participation today.